Just few minor technical difficulties. In case you're wondering, I'm not Han Leanne. Han Leanne is not available tonight due to a personal matter. But she, I believe that she will be attending the meeting online. The day, the, the day today is June 23rd, 2020. We are at the 7:00 PM open session for the Milpitas Unified School District Regular Board Meeting. Let's, in closed session, the Board of Trustees unanimously approved superintendent's recommendation for the position of manager of business services. In closed session, the board completed the superintendent's performance evaluation. I'm pleased to share that the board gave the superintendent an overall rating on the evaluation as satisfactory. Pursuant to paragraph nine E of the superintendent's employment agreement, this evaluation re-rating results in the extension of the superintendent's employment agreement for one additional year, meaning that her term is extended to June 30th, 2023. The superintendent's salary and other terms of employment, employment remain as set forth in her agreement and its prior amendments. I'd also like to add, if you're wondering why we are together without masks on June 18th, Governor Newsom issued an executive order, the California Department of Health issued guidance stating that face coverages are to be worn when we were unable to keep physical distance of at least six feet. I'll let the record show that the board is at least six feet apart from one another, including the executive cabinet. With that said, welcome to the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. If you would like to address the board on any item on this agenda or item that does not appear on this agenda, please complete the online comment form that is on our website. On the comment form, please show your name, your, the item that you'd like to speak to, and let me your remarks or the, can't limit the remarks to two minutes, but the comments. Please note that the laws of the, laws prohibit members of the board commenting or engaging in discussion during this part of the agenda, except for when seeking clarification on a point made by the speaker. The board, however, may instruct the superintendent to look into the matter and place it on a future agenda. Individuals who require special accommodation should contact the superintendent's office at least two business days before the meeting date. So if there's anyone that would like to participate or view these board meetings in Zoom, please reach out to the office in plenty of time so that we may provide you the necessary assistance. All the scope, all disclosable public records related to an agenda for discussion in an open session of a regular meeting of the board of education and distributed to all or the majority of board members less than 72 hours prior to that meeting shall be made available for public inspection at the same time. The writing is distributed to all or majority of board members. Any such writings will be made available to the public inspection during business hours in the superintendent's office, Building 100 at 1331 East Calaveras Boulevard between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Barring technical difficulties, such writings will also be posted on the district website at www.musd.org. The meeting of the board is being broadcast live and recorded. If you have any safety-related concerns at this point, please contact the superintendent's office prior to the meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order with roll call. Han Leanne?
Here.
Chris Norwood here. Min No. Kelly Upchewan?
Here.
Michael Si?
Here.
Kush Brumbach? Timothy Griggs? Let the record show, our student board members are most likely prepared to enjoy their summer. At this time, I'd like to, um, to the...
Vice President Norwood?
Yes.
Please address to the community that there are open session, um, the action items on the agenda. There are a couple of, um, public hearings, and in order for Scott to read the comments at the time of that item, maybe remind the community members to email or submit the forms now prior to the item.
That's, that's an excellent point, President Leanne. Thank you very much. We're all living in this slightly different time and we're having to do the board meetings virtually for a while. And what we've discovered in past meetings is that sometimes the comments from the public aren't getting through in time or we're moving on to the next item on the agenda when there's a comment from the public on a previous item that we discussed ourselves without the opportunity for additional comments to be read. So thank you for your patience with us. And, and with that said, I'd like to make this pause because, and ask Scott, oh, do we have any comments from the public at this time?
Uh, yes, we have two comments from the public. Let me, uh, get them up. A first comment is from Robert Young of Park Victoria Drive, representing the Milpitas Community Educational Endowment. The Milpitas Community Educational Endowment is proud to announce that its $5,000 annual grant for MUSD is available for its second year in a row. We want to thank key donors such as LAM Research and Excel Test for their contributions that have helped us to reach our fundraising goals for this year, even as we are facing COVID-19 prevention measures. The grant page at, it's at the mceefoundation.org is now available and grant applications are due September 30th, 2020. We hope to award the grant around October 20th, 2020. Okay, and I have one other. This is from Tina Ortiz. She's representing Milpitas NVPAL softball of Dixon Landing Road. And she states, as the current president of the MNVPAL softball, I am very disappointed that MUSD has not pursued renovations to Russell softball fields without consulting our organization. Softball has been a part of the community and the TRMS site for over 30 years. We currently serve 150 youth of the Milpitas community and are the only girls' exclusive program in the area. We would have appreciated being included in the discussion about upcoming renovations and would have hoped the district would have included softball fields to be part of the new plan. It shouldn't be left to the city to find a new home for softball. The district should have made sure the neck, the new site, Dixon Landing Park, would be comparable to the Thomas Russell Fields. We are being forced to give up. The fields being removed at Thomas Russell Middle School are affecting MUSD families and students, not just a recreational sport. How does the district intend to ensure their community is treated fairly on matters of this, of this regard? And let me just check if there's any more. And right now, those are the two public comments we have.
Thank you. Was there any direction provided previously? I know that we, there was a comment at the previous board meeting regarding the softball, uh, complex or the softball opportunity at the Thomas Russell Field. Was there any direction given at the last board meeting? Is anyone recall?
The superintendent wanna?
I don't recall if there was a specific ask, however, I do know that, uh... Thank you. I don't remember a specific ask, however, I did state that the, uh, city is working with, uh, the bobby socks and will have a bobby socks field for softball. And also so that the board and public knows the renovations of the field at Russell do include a softball field in addition to a track and a small, uh, practice field. And the impetus for, well, there are two reasons that we are redoing the fields. Number one is that the number of gopher holes that continue to, continue to find them their way to the fields pose a safety hazard. And secondly, when the San Jose Community College Extension was built, it took away that whole field that Russell used. And it was promised to them that if a bond passed, as it did in 2018, that we would redo the fields so that students could use the fields and also that student teams such as soccer would have access to the fields after school. And you'll see later on the agenda item under consent that the city's joint use agreement with the full district is ending June 30th, 2020. And in that joint use, you'll see that the bobby socks belongs to the city and it's a part of the joint use. So that is why the city is relocating because they understand that we do need to redo our field and they would like to have the bobby socks on a different location, which I am told, uh, by Director Lawrenceon is a very good site.
Thank you Superintendent Jordan. Um, if we can take a brief moment to take care of the technical, um, aesthetics for Superintendent Jordan so that she can be heard clearly, um, as well as attempt to minimize the reverberation, that'd be great. Thanks Scott.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll... Does that work now? Is it working? Okay.
So I'd like to also, um, before Cheryl repeats what she just said, I would like to commend David Flashner, Scott Forstner, and Chin Song for providing us. Okay, Chin says he doesn't want to be known that he's a part of this. Okay, right. So I'll make sure I never say Chin Song while I'm up here. For the, for the hard work that they put in, that we could actually bring you this, uh, board meeting in this capacity and we're still working on a few technical difficulties. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you. So I'll repeat since...
Superintendent Jordan, let me just, uh, I just want to let you know you are talking through the mic on the dais.
Oh, so even though the sign pops up and says, and you, me, I just need to ignore it.
Yes, and so you're talking through the mic on the dais, which the public in the community are hearing, but you don't hear your mic like we normally do. That's what we gotta get used to. So it's like you're talking, but you're only hearing yourself, but it's not...
Just so you know, there is a pop-up that says to unmute. We just have to click later.
Okay, okay, Chris. Thank you.
That's why I was, so thanks. Okay, we're working this one out. All right, so to repeat what I had said earlier, the, uh, I'll streamline it. With the building of San Jose Community College Extension, Russell Middle School lost its field that it was using. The staff at the time was promised that if a bond were to pass, as it did in 2018, that the district would provide renovation to the field. And secondly, the field is often wrought with, uh, gopher holes, which do create a safety hazard. And you'll see later in the consent agenda item that the joint use contract with the city is there because we are ending it as of June 30th, 2020 and that the Bobby Sock Shack actually belongs to the city and the city will be relocating to another site, which Director Lawrenceon of the city staff has shared with me is a very good site with ample parking and opportunity for softball to continue there. And in addition, in our plans, we do include a softball field as well as a track and a practice field.
Thank you Superintendent Jordan. Are there any other comments from the public? At this time, um, let's do the pledge of the flag salute. Ready? Kelly, would you leave us in the flag salute, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, our flag.
The regions, the flag.
Thank you. We are now on item 11, uh, MUSD 2018-21 Strategic Goals. A board member, Min, could you read us first, please?
Certainly. Build a culture we that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff. Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion and learning for their future careers. Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments.
I want to make sure. I think I might be a little rusty at this or out of order. I need a, a motion to approve your open session agenda.
I motion to approve the open session agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
I second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Min, for reading the strategic goals. We're on item 12, Superintendent's Report.
I'm excited to have, uh, excited for tonight's Superintendent's Report. This is our last one for the 2021, 2019 school year. And I would first like to invite Lilia Cortez, who is our new business manager, to have a moment to say a few words to the board.
Hi, thank you, Superintendent Cheryl. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, good. Um, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, and, uh, thank you for making time to be here today. I just wanted to take this moment to express my gratitude to the Milpitas Board of Education, the Executive Cabinet, and Superintendent Cheryl Jordan for this wonderful and exciting opportunity. I consider myself very lucky to have given this opportunity and I have confidence that stepping into this role, will be the best team. During my time at MUSD, I've been able to support our colleagues while also growing professionally and interpersonally. I will continue to assist, develop, and grow in helping the talented and dedicated staff within the district. And I will do that not only so that I grow with the district, but I facilitate the growth of others as well. I learn from each and every person that I come in contact with. And I will continue to learn in, um, all the important lessons that are essential to being able to face the challenges that we have ahead to truly build and encompass the culture of we that we strive for as a district. I would like to also, um, thank my family, friends, and colleagues for their unwavering support and encouragement as well as acknowledge the past members of the staff that worked with me and helped me get to this point. I think that together with Assistant Superintendent Wendy and our wonderful staff and their professionalism and dedication, I'm certain that we will only continue to grow and accomplish our goals. So, members of the board, Executive Cabinet, and Superintendent Jordan, it's a great honor to accept the position of manager for, uh, business services. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Lilia, and I look forward to, uh, seeing more of you in this new role and watching how you work with Assistant Superintendent Wendy Zhang in figuring out ways that we can become even stronger in our financial work and in particular, how we move our systems to be more digitally aligned with, uh, workforce development. And I look forward to having you in this new position on, when does she start? On July 1st?
July 1st.
On July 1st.
Yes. Thank you so much. I look forward as well.
I would like now to recognize a young lady who is a, one of our many outstanding leaders of Milpitas High School. And I had the good fortune first to meet her as a journalist with our Milpitas High School Union newspaper. And she is also a leader in our, um, speech and debate team. And she is one of the only speech and debaters who has gone to the three different national levels that she's been at. And she is passionate about what she does. And she's worked to develop along with Mr. Schletzbaum and the other leaders of our speech and debate team a summer program that is offered to students of Milpitas, Reed, and is meant to help them develop not only their speaking skills, but a love for speech and debate. So, uh, she has effectively worked to create a long progression for speech and debate. So I'd like to ask you, Rachel, to say a few words about the work that you're doing.
Hello, thank you so much for inviting me to be here and I'm really happy to be hosting this public speaking program for Milpitas youth. We started this program, uh, in the May of last year and we've been developing curriculum. So in the past academic 1920s school year, we've had programs at four schools for over 100 students in MUSD. And this summer, we're hosting a online program, which, uh, started yesterday for 300 students in MUSD. And I really hope that I can show kids through this program that public speaking, like any other skill, is something that can be learned. It's not something that, you know, you're born with and anyone who has the dedication can develop this rewarding skill. So I hope this can help, um, kids in the future develop leadership and critical thinking skills. So I think it's really important and thank you again for inviting me.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, I'd like to, go ahead. Rachel, are you going to be a senior this year?
Yes, I'm a senior in the fall.
That's what I thought.
So what's the plan for this program to continue after you graduate?
Hopefully, I still go to college in the area and I can continue to host this program. But if not, I might be able to host it during the summer and pass it on during the school year to younger members of the debate team who might be interested in volunteering.
So you're gonna continue the program with younger students? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, there, currently, we have underclassmen who are also instructors for the program, so I believe they can take it on later.
Awesome, thank you.
I would next like to introduce Charles Schletzbaum. He is one of our science teachers at Milpitas High School. And he is also our person who oversees the whole speech and debate team. And I think I first met Charles, gosh, maybe eight or nine years ago. And he took over the speech and debate from, um, a gentleman who was well-regarded. And he, with students like Rachel, has tremendously grown the program. They've worked with our elementary as well as our middle school teachers in order to have, as you heard from Rachel, a pipeline of speech and debaters. And so I just really wanted to take this opportunity, Charles, to recognize the passion and leadership and dedication that you have. I've been to a few of the speech and debate, um, tournaments and I see how you are running around from classroom to classroom. And I've seen how at other school districts that you are recognized as a leader there. And the passion that you have is just, just exudes, uh, exudes contagion for others to be equally passionate in it. And I like to see that same passion in your science classes. I saw a couple of times that you posted videos of yourself with, uh, your students doing your science labs with our distance learning this spring. And it's just very gratifying to be able to have this moment to share the board, uh, to share with the board. Thank you to you for the work that you've done.
Thanks. Um, what Rachel did bring up, what has also come up is she placed along with a team of five from our district in the top eight in the country, or actually the world, because there's teams from China and Korea and a few other places too, in the top eight of the world for our district team, which earned us an extra slot. So she was kind of a little too modest on that part.
As are you.
As are you.
Well, what you were talking about earlier is I'm the vice president for debate, co-vice president. So actually, my, for this coming year, it's my duty, it's my job to actually run all the debate, not the speech terms, but the debate tournaments for the entire league for the coming year, which means I've got to learn a lot of new technology. And the, the gentleman that you mentioned was Stephen Stewart. He's who our tournament in September is named after. And this, this, um, this year's tournament will have to be held online. So again, like I said, I've got to learn an entire new set of platforms and I have about two months to figure out if we're using Zoom, are we using eight by eight, are we using Google? And get all that out. It's gonna be crazy. Hopefully somehow to host about eight or 900 people on a digital platform to have a tournament.
Well, thank you, Charles, and I look forward to supporting you again on, uh, one of your tournaments later this year. Next, I have a gentleman who I met when I was in my, I believe I was in my second year as a history teacher. And he also was, um, in the history department and attending, uh, we used to have articulation back then between middle and high school and alternative high school. And I remember being in his classroom and him talking about, uh, the work that he was doing and noticing the many pictures of students on his wall that he had. And it was not too long after that, that he moved from the classroom into his role as a teacher on special assignment, working with students in at-risk programs and, uh, tobacco use prevention and also working with parents who had very difficult, uh, youth that they were trying to figure out how to parent, as well as becoming a liaison with our police department. And Mr. Henry Robinson has been doing that for over 20 years now, I believe. And he retired about five years ago, maybe six. And he still does this work with us because he is just truly passionate about what he does. because he is just truly passionate about what he does. And many people don't understand the depth of the work that he does because it's behind the scenes and it's not something that is done in an office or in a classroom. It's out and about in the community. And so I wanted to, along with our board, I wanted to take a moment, Henry, to recognize you for the many years of community building that you have done and for the behind-the-scenes work that you do around emergency and crisis times, and that you're extremely grateful to you and appreciate the advice and information that you bring forward. And before we ask you to say a few words, I would like to ask our chief of police, Armando Corpus, to say a few words about you.
I'm still unmute myself, so good evening, everybody. Thank you, Superintendent Jordan, for allowing me the opportunity to offer some comments about Mr. Robinson. So in my years with the Mel Peters Police Department, I've come to understand that Mr. Robinson is a pillar of strength and support in our community. I know that he's helped many at-risk students. I think it's safe to say in the tens of thousands of students in his years working for the school district. You know, he's worked with students in crisis. He's connected families with needed resources. I have personally seen Mr. Robinson helping kids in guiding them towards college and providing scholarship information, even giving them recommendations on how to apply for college. He's been a significant resource for our community. I am very grateful for his services as a liaison between the police department and the school district. You know, it's common for us to identify at-risk students or families in the community and connect Mr. Robinson with them. And I know that there have been opportunities that Mr. Robinson has connected families with the police department when they're in need of our services. I'm going to finish by thanking Mr. Robinson for his care, his strength, and his support for everybody around him. There's nothing I can say tonight that's going to truly describe or explain the positive impact he's had on this community and even on our police department. I will say that, Mr. Robinson, I know that you're listening, this community is definitely better because of you. And I want to thank you for being a role model for all of us to follow, including myself. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, chief. And before I let you on, Henry, I would also like to ask Vice President Chris Norwood to say a few words about you, and also to thank you, Vice President, for nominating Henry for tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. I'm a high school senior at Mel Peters High School, and Mr. Robinson is my US government teacher. He explains on the very first day that you need this class to graduate, and I'm going to do all that I can to help you graduate all the way through up until the last three weeks. Because if you have not prepared yourself to graduate by that time, you are not going to graduate from my class. Do not have your mom call. Do not have your dad call. Do not have anyone come down here to talk to me about why you are not graduating because you know why you are graduating, and it is unfair to me and the rest of this class for you to do that. The class was shocked. And then Mr. Robinson laughed, and then he went into explaining the purpose of government, the history of government, the value of government in a way that was mesmerizing and captivating to everyone in his classroom. I'll never forget that experience in high school. And then to see him still involved with the Mel Peters Unified School District when he clearly has a lot of options in life in terms of education, leadership. He chose to remain here and do a number of different things on behalf of the school district. At the graduations on all the campuses, he's behind the scenes, very, very subtle, but he is the go-to in so many different ways. And the opportunity to honor him in just a small way, it is my honor, it is my privilege. I'm extremely grateful for your mentorship, for your leadership in terms of communicating with so many people in the city of Mel Peters, even though you live in Palo Alto. That's a whole separate thing. But the love that you show for the Mel Peters Unified School District and the city of Mel Peters is unprecedented, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Congratulations.
Thank you. And now, Henry, I'd like to ask you to say a few words, or as many words as you'd like. But you have to unmute yourself. You have to unmute yourself.
My wife's computer here. Can you hear me now?
Yep, we hear you.
I would like to thank the chief and vice president, Chris Norwood, for this honor. I have enjoyed working with the Mel Peters Unified School District and the Mel Peters, you know, Police Department over these many years. I really valued the community and have seen it grow from a very small community to a very large community, and with that, you had problems. And I think this past year in working with the community, I've seen families that have been laid off, kids who have met the challenge of distant learning, and I've seen the community come together as a whole. I really, truly believe that these kids that are graduating this year, starting tomorrow and Friday, are our future leaders as well as our future taxpayers. So I used to tell my students, it's important that you graduate, get a job, because it means that you are going to become a taxpayer, and that's important to people living within the community where you're going to be. So I really accept this honor, and I would like to say thank you, thank you very much for this.
Thank you, Henry. We had hoped to be able to share... Trying to switch here, to share our appreciation for our student board members. However, both Kush and Timothy were not able to be here. So hopefully, we will be able to recognize them at another time. And then I'll move on to our next person that I would like to recognize. Why isn't it letting me share what I have on here? It says I'm sharing my screen, but I don't see it. Yeah, there was one photo I had picked out. So while Scott is getting that picture up of Mr. David Hufton, I wanted to thank him for his contribution to our school district. Over the last year and a half, he's contributed $160,000 to our schools. And in particular, this month, he gave us $140,000, and that's $10,000 for each of the K-12 schools. And he is a person who's had his children in our schools. His wife was a professor at San Jose State University, and she passed away last spring, excuse me, last fall. And because of her dedication to education, that is why he wanted to, wants to do what he can to support Mel Peters School District. And his grandchildren went through Palmroye and Russell and Mel Peters High School. And he is in his 90s, and so he couldn't be here tonight, and that's why we went to him. And the pictures that you see are pictures of us accepting the checks. And then the young man in the corner there is somebody who helps him out. His name is Javier Shagoya, and he also went through Palmroye, Russell, and Mel Peters High School. And his father, Jesus, Shagoya, is our custodian at Curtner. So you see, Mel Peters really is a community of givers who care about one another, and our schools are at the foundation of the community. And it's so remarkable to see how much we can do together and especially how our culture of "we" has ignited our community. So I thank you, Mr. Hufton, for the support that you are providing to us.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. Item 13 on the agenda, Superintendent's Executive Cabinet reports. Members of the executive cabinet will have recent significant information to present to the governing board on topics that are not on the agenda. Reports are limited. Reports are done as, yeah, three minutes. You need to change that number. Superintendent Jordan?
Yes, thank you. I would like to start with Assistant Superintendent Wendy Zhang of Business Services.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. I have three reports tonight. First of all, I'm very excited and welcome Lilia Cortez to our business services management team. A week, I mean, a week from today, it'll be the last day of 1920 school year. And after that, the business services were working on year-end closing. We will need to close our book during the summer. So, Lilia, this is a perfect time for you to be the manager, and I'm so excited and for your growth, and I'm looking forward for the long-term professional relationship working with you and with the team. Secondly, it's from our student nutrition department. As you're probably aware, that started on June 8th. We are offering the summer seamless program. That program offers a free meal for anyone who is 18 years old or under. You are welcome to come to four locations, oh, three locations that we had this summer. So far, we have provided 55,000 free lunches. And we're very excited about serving our community, and we're thinking this summer will generate additional income to support the program financially. The last report from me is this past Friday, myself and our superintendent Cheryl Jordan, we had a meeting with the rating agency Moody's. And this rating is for us to, for our chance, the short-term cash borrowing and also in our bond refunding that we're going to ask the board to approve their resolution tonight. The meeting went very well. We're hoping to get our rating result this coming Friday. So that's all my report for tonight.
Assistant Superintendent Learning and Development, Norma Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. I am really happy to report that this summer, we are piloting the ESA/ESY hybrid program with our 9 through 12 grade CBI students. All the students are enrolled in virtual learning, and 12 out of the 15 students opted in for the in-person sessions that began this Monday. The students' in-person sessions are lessons for 45 minutes. And what we've learned so far is that the students are very eager to learn, have been coping very wonderfully, and we are hoping to extend to 75 minutes. As the BITs look at how the students are responding, we are looking at continuing to collect data and extend the program to probably three to four students so that they can start engaging. So this gives me, I want to thank the team for being innovative and collaborative in providing these opportunities for our students. The second report is I'm excited that the C2C continues to grow in such a way that the word has gone out, and some of the neighboring school districts are wondering if we could offer those opportunities, extend the opportunities for other teachers to participate as well. So the word is out. We are looking at having the next rounds of PD on July 7th through 9th, and July 20th through the 21st, and then July 27th through the 28th. We are still looking for teachers who are willing to come and share your learning with the rest of us, because the C2C platform is an opportunity for us to elevate each other's practice and share the learning. And that gives us an opportunity for us to start thinking. Some of the participants have raised the idea of, can we give them certificates of participation? And also, we were wondering to give some incentives for them providing us feedback as they attend the training or the workshops for them to give us feedback to continue to grow. And gave us also an opportunity to think about a P2P. And in collaboration with the Mel Peters, the College Extension, and also Dr. Lopez and the CDC program, we are planning on launching our P2P Parent-to-Parent, Parent University, and the first session is scheduled for the last week of July with onboarding our TK parents new to our district.
Awesome. And Assistant Superintendent of Human Relations, Jonathan Brunson.
To the families and staff, real quick, one, I'm really excited and want to applaud our HR department. If you've looked at our personnel report, it's probably the longest one you'll see in a very long time, and that's because of the diligent work that our team did with CSCA. I'll have to have a microphone.
Can you hear me now? Sorry. Just want to shout out to my HR staff, putting together probably the largest personnel report of the year, not just because of the hiring of new staff, but also because of the reclassification of over 150 employees. And they did this in about two weeks so that we can get them paid on time at the end of the month, working with our business services department. Thank you, Wendy, and your team. And so, you know, shout out to Kay and Maria Elena, Virginia, as well as Lori and Heather and Charlotte. Thank you for all your help. Number two, we've been working very hard to get interviews done for admin positions. Tomorrow, we'll be interviewing for our director for student services. And I also want to give a special thanks to our summer school administrative staff and all of our certificated staff and classified for, we're fully operational for our summer school programs. I just want to thank Lori Nuneo and Christina Ravo and Nicole Klein for their efforts. And Happy Blated Father's Days for all the fathers out there from the kids' table here in the boardroom.
Thank you, team. And I'd like to take a moment to appreciate the work that each of you has done this school year, especially in the last three months. It's been a lot of heavy lifting for you and your teams, and it's not been 24/7. It's been eight days a week, and I appreciate your teamwork on this.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. Congratulations to each of you of the executive cabinet. The board also echoes those sentiments as far as the hard work and the evolution. Thank you very much. Item 14, Board Group Agreements. The Board Group Agreements are provided for the board's ready reference as a reminder of our conduct as elected officials. For the sake of time, we are going to bypass the reading of the Board Group Agreements, and we're going to move to Board Communication Requests, starting with, I mean, no.
Thank you, Vice President Norwood. The events I attended since the last board meeting was the Spangler PTA Forum, the Joint Town Hall meeting with our San Jose City College, Mel Peters Extension, the elected officials, call with Dr. Sarah Cody, the SCC SBA meeting, the Digital Equity Coalition meeting, the Rotary meetings, and the University of California, Santa Cruz Forum on Solidarity Economics. and the University of California, Santa Cruz Forum on Solidarity Economics for the Coronavirus Crisis and Beyond. For those that would like a little bit more information, just reach out to me and I'm happy to have that discussion. Thank you.
Board Member Ray Trump.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. I'll make it short. So I attended the second Harvest Food Distribution with President Han. I also was in on the Joint Town Hall Meeting with the San Jose City College Extension. And I was on the call with the elected officials.
Thank you. Board Member Si.
Yes, I was on the call with the elected officials and Public Health Department, the S C C S B A Weekly Meeting. Let's see. And we tried to talk to San Jose City Council about the vocational education program funding. But they tried something, they kind of moved the meeting around, so that was a little weird. And I've been studying a lot about the Black Death back in the thirteen hundreds and how they dealt with the situation. So, you know, trying to learn from history.
Thank you, Board Member Si. President Han Yin and myself, we're going to concede the time. Item sixteen on the agenda, Reports. Item sixteen A, Subcommittee of the COVID-nineteen Advisory Task Force Twenty Twenty-One, M U S D Educate Everywhere Plan for Twenty Twenty-One School Year.
All right. See if this works for sharing. All right, it works. So tonight, I, let me just make sure this is all working. Okay. Tonight, I would like to share with the board and the community an update on phasing in Milpitas Unified School District Educate Everywhere for Twenty Twenty Twenty-One. And when we met on June ninth, I shared with the board the plans for elementary, middle, and high school hybrids for distance learning and in-person learning. And shared that we had many subcommittees that will be working on the details of the different aspects of M U S D Educate Everywhere. And tonight, we have some of those subcommittee reports. I am very grateful that we have one hundred and fifty-eight subcommittee members. And so if we take into account the one hundred and fifty-eight subcommittee members and the thirty-four advisory task force members, we have nearly two hundred people who have an active voice in the details of the planning. And then beyond that, we have the one thousand five hundred fifty-nine English speakers, Chinese, and Spanish speakers who completed the last community survey, ninety-eight percent of which were parents on input for Educate Everywhere. And in addition to that, I'd like to remind everybody that we've had weekly, bi-monthly, and monthly parent meetings with different parent groups about their experiences in Educate Everywhere and their hopes for what Twenty Twenty-One will be. So I can say with great confidence that this is truly a culture of we endeavor. And out of it, we are going to have the best possible learning experiences for our students in M U S D Educate Everywhere two point O. Tonight, we will not be hearing from all of the subcommittees, but we will be hearing from several of them. And before we do that, I want everybody to remember that these are the values that we hold in our, the forefront of all of the planning and details. Remembering that health and safety of team members and students is first. Social, emotional, learning, and wellness of all, and that includes parents, team members, and students, our learners. And we want to ensure the social, social, emotional, learning, and wellness for them. We are trying to ensure that we are balancing the needs of all and also that we have equitable access to quality learning experiences. And that we are remembering that we need to be flexible in how we provide our distance learning and where we work and how. And the two pictures are just reminders of how those values are played out. And I shared at the last meeting that our tech services team did all they could to make sure that every single family member of students had Wi-Fi access, including going into the hills and putting something together for families up there. And a reminder of how we are in this together with a portrait from student Misha Chatterable, who is one of our middle school students. Now, I'd like for our Tech Tools Subcommittee to share the highlights of what they have talked about thus far. And please keep in mind that our subcommittees will be meeting through July. So first, we have Andrea Hetchison. Is she online?
Andrea has allergy, Cheryl. So is Sherry Miller low online? I think she's supposed to be on our behalf. Okay, so our team has already met twice, once last week and just yesterday to brainstorm how our working, how we're going to work together and what we're what our hopes, what our outcomes are going to be. We've already sent out a digital tool survey to all the teachers in our district. And so far, we've had a hundred and twelve teachers respond with technology tools that they're currently using, technology tools that they want to learn more about. And I can't remember some of the questions, but we've had a really good response from, from our, our staff. We're also looking for ways to engage our parents with, by providing them workshops technology tools that their, their children will be using as well. So it's been a very productive meeting with Andrea, Sherry, and five other team members. That's what we have so far.
Thank you. Thank you, Raquel. Next, we have our Curriculum Assessments and Grading Subcommittee. And Greg Barnes will be speaking about that.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Barnes, and I have the privilege of being the Director of Learning and Development with Milpitas Unified School District. And I also have the honor of representing the Curriculum Assessments and Grading Subcommittee this evening. We are excited to have just begun our Subcommittee work. The first meeting happened last week where the five facilitators met to sort of figure out what our frame is for the subsequent four meetings and how we want to approach that work specifically. There are three things that are really guiding our work as we move forward, each of the next four Thursdays through the month of July. One is the outstanding work that Assistant Superintendent Norma Rodriguez began with a group of teachers earlier this year, which of course we know is our first one point O Educate Everywhere Foundation. And we'll be utilizing that as we move forward. Secondly, we have two guiding questions that will be framing our work around. I'll read those quickly here for you as they're in front of you. First is, how do we create a robust and flexible learning experience for all of our students? Again, echoing the values that Cheryl started our presentation off with. And lastly, how do we ensure that teachers can infuse power standards and formative assessments as we work in guiding our practice for the first month of school and beyond?
Thank you. We have our English Learner Subcommittee and Parwinder Johal will share the highlights of what they've discussed thus far.
Good everyone, good evening, everyone. And our committee has met few times already. And we have total about five, six members, and it consists of teachers, admins, and parents. And we came up with some guiding questions because we wanted to really focus on the needs of English learners. And this, the question that really, we spent a lot of time talking about was what systems can we have in place to create a district-wide coalition that prioritizes E L by advocating to eliminate disparities and support teachers and students in overcoming the challenges? Because we know all the groups that we've met so far with, you know, teachers, students, and parents getting their feedback. Regardless, even though we have so many things in place, we know that, that those disparities are there. And our group is really dedicated to coming up with ways to eliminate that or be proactive for the fall. And we're going to continue to conduct empty interviews with teachers and staff, students and families, especially those ones that are in E L D program during the summer. Create a P D using the C two C platform and a website just dedicated for teachers that they can directly go to for more support. And then the parent workshops in July and August in multiple languages. So they know, for example, TK E L parents, how onboarding is, or newcomer parents and students. Because really, one thing that came across is our newcomer students that are new to the country. And we start with distance learning, what kind of supports will they need? And then update distance learning E L progress monitoring. We really want to figure out where our E Ls are right now and how can we monitor their progress? So I'm kind of, I will probably reach out to the assessment committee that Greg is on to figure out how would, how that committee could support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Parwinder. Our next social, next Subcommittee is the Social, Emotional Health and Wellness. And this is one of our largest committees that has over twenty members.
Good evening, all. My name is Jerome Maneha. I am the Activities Director at Milpias High School. And so we had our meeting on, last Friday on June nineteenth. We had about fifteen attendees at our first committee meeting from both the elementary and secondary level, as well, we had administrators, teachers, parents, and students, which is what we, as a committee, agreed was important, that it requires input from all levels. When we walked into the session, we had a common consensus that positive mental health and social emotional learning are essential for students, regardless of the environment that we're working in. But especially now in our current climate, we need to really develop and amplify what our programming for social emotional wellness. Without it, students are going to be experiencing anxiety, loneliness, depression, fear. And we have seen impact on student engagement and learning in the spring for both teachers and students. And so the goal is, how do we, how can we help knowingly, how can we measure and monitor and help students process and understand really what's going on? And so our agreement is that mental wellness needs to be a district-wide priority. We, all the parents and students and teachers mentioned that there's many individualized efforts. But how do we encourage a joint effort, a team, teamwork to really bolster this program? And we also, the parents who were participating really wanted to figure out ways they can get involved in the planning for this. Because they, they too are experiencing feelings of low social emotional wellness because of what their students going through. And so they want to be part of that decision-making. And so the possible ideas that we generated at our first session included building an intentional class time to build a sense of community and trust. We had a suggestion about creating mentorships or teams of teachers, parents, and students that they can all come together as kind of a support group. And so in our next means, we'll establish the logistics of that.
Thank you, Gerald. And our parent guardian support team met earlier this afternoon. And Beth Cohen from Rancho will share the highlights of where they are with their planning.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Jordan. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So our Subcommittee has met twice now. The first time last Tuesday and then just again today. We have about between ten and fifteen people on the Subcommittee. I am joined by Krista Davis as the co-facilitator, an elementary school teacher at Weller. And we also have Stephanie Park, Assistant Principal at Spangler, currently helping guide us, and I thank them very much. We've also had parents join and new parents join today. So it seems to be kind of an influx of parents coming in, which is really great because we want to hear from them. So these two first meetings that we had, we really focused on what are the issues, what are the problems? And so you can see in front of you that what we came up with is how do we familiarize families with Educate Everywhere, especially new families coming to our district before the beginning of the year? What is the best means of communication to our parents and guardians? How do we help our parents and guardians manage the technology platforms that all teachers are using? And how do we help working parents manage their children's learning at home? And how do we emotionally support the parents? So it's been really wonderful hearing the voices of the parents. And we plan to meet at least two more times the next two Tuesdays to start focusing on the solutions. And I thank you very much, and happy summer, everyone.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cohen. Next, we have our Nutrition Services. And they are co-facilitated by Fatima Gachetti and Sucheta. I'm sorry, I reversed our last names. Fatima and Sucheta from Student Nutrition.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sucheta Ghiani, and I'm the Student Nutrition Supervisor for secondary school sites. Firstly, I would like to thank the S N S Committee members for taking the time to meet with us and for giving us their valuable feedback. The S N S Committee met last Monday, and the fourteen members represent a diverse group of parents, paraprofessionals, warehouse staff, and nutrition staff from all grade levels. As you know, safety of our students and staff is very important to us. In the last three months, we have served meals following CDC and Health Department guidelines, which include wearing face coverings, checking the COVID-nineteen symptoms, implementing social distancing, frequent hand washing and disinfecting. We are currently exploring additional protective gears for our staff, such as face shields and protective barriers at the point-of-sale stations. Next, let's talk about what would meal service look like in fall. Starting August thirteenth, we will open up all S N S cafeteria for easy access for families to pick up meals. We will continue to provide breakfast and lunch to the students. With the current C D waiver until August thirty-first, we plan to serve grab-and-go meals for students to take home to consume. And parents can pick up meals from any school. It doesn't have to be their home school. Our meal operation has been very seamless since day one of the pandemic. This is due to the C D waivers and flexibilities, which include all students eat for free, multiple meal day pickup, students allowed to consume meals off campus, parents or guardian able to pick up the meals for students. The C D waivers have helped us feed more students and reduce exposure for staff and family. We're advocating for the waivers to be extended so that we can get the flexibility we need to be able to serve our students. Next, Fatima will talk about the considerations if these waivers are not extended beyond August thirty-first.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Fatima, the Student Nutrition Supervisor overseeing elementary sites. In preparation for the hybrid model and if the C D flexibilities are not extended, there are complex consideration we're planning for. First, we will need to make sure there's equitable access to meals for both virtual learners and in-person learners by providing two separate meal times and making sure meal service time does not conflict with online learning time. We are considering families that will be working or that will need to be with our children during virtual learning time. Next, without the C D waivers, we will be moving to a point-of-service system and will be ringing up students based on their eligibility. We have confirmed by doing a mock time study that the proposed forty-five to fifty-minute for in-person grab-and-go lunch may be adequate to allow for social distancing in line and ringing up of meals. In order to minimize exposure, we will require students to carry their I D card for touchless scanning, and there will be no cash handling, prepayments only. In closing, our planning is based on current info and may be subject to change. We have advocated C D for flexibility, and we will continue to work with our Subcommittee to We have advocated CDE for flexibility and we will continue to work with our subcommittee to solidify details for our plan.
Thank you, Fatima and Sucheta.
Welcome.
Our next subcommittee that we're going to hear from are Systems and Safety and we have Abner Edgar and Brian from MOT who are co facilitating.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. I'll be starting off. I'm Edgar Dornas, custodial supervisor for the Mill P S Unified School District. So cleaning and disinfecting is a big part of COVID-19. We've been studying closely the CDC recommendation, Santa Clara County Health Department. We've been piloting some different models at the summer school site. But we came to the conclusion and the elementary school and middle school model would be feasible with our current resources, staffing, equipment. Wouldn't be too hard to shift gears and basically adjust schedules what we currently use utilize. At our school sites, there will be some items that get pushed back, you know, no longer focusing on cosmetic items because priority number one is disinfection of classrooms to keep staff, students, everybody safe on campus. Our main challenge to clean will be the high school, specifically obviously MHS. We discussed it with parents, staff, you know, myself. And we, we came to the conclusion that we would need teacher assistance to help clean classrooms because of the short amount of time we would be able to complete the task. And obviously, if Ms. Orlando and Mrs. Kessinger are in there, obviously they have some input when we come to it, but we couldn't come up with any other way to do it feasibly and possibly for the other school sites, we will need some additional for equipment to make things more efficient. And I'll pass it off to Mr. Abner now.
I'll be, thank you Edgar. I'll be covering signage and what we came up with is that all areas will need to be as secure as possible, perhaps some areas even remaining locked. For example, offices, hallways, entrances from the outside into the classrooms. And only gain access through requests prior to showing up to campus for parents and the public. Directing flow to office for outsiders. This will require principal involvement to communicate to the parents via parent square regarding specific protocol for each site. Elementary, secondary and adult schools is pretty similar in adopting a plan. Context with office will be by appointment only prior to showing up to the sites. The sites will need to develop a plan for their own office because size varies greatly. Floor signage outside and inside, perhaps directional arrows, social distancing markers, et cetera, will be required in offices and always. The sites will need to designate a drop off point at each school site to aid in downsizing the need to enter the offices. Limit hallway traffic flow but provide directional signage. Each side needs to develop a plan for how outside traffic flow will work using tractor shock paint perhaps, especially for picking up their lunches. The only difference for secondary and adult ed is outside directional traffic while walking between classes. This will have to be designated markings. And that's what we came up with. Now I'll pass it on to Mr. Shree.
Thanks, Abner. Appreciate it. Brian Shree, Director of Maintenance and Operations and Transportation. Very excited and glad to be here. I'll be speaking on air circulation and a few other topics as part of reopening the district. We're following guidelines from CDC. Along with ASHRAE, which is the American Society of Refrigeration, Heating and Air Conditioning Engineers for maintaining the HVAC fresh air standards for COVID-19. Since our HVAC maintenance team has returned to work, we're proactively started major preventive maintenance services on our HVAC units, going through proper fresh air circulation for each unit, cleaning coils, belts and filters. This is being recorded in a per unit inspection checklist. This will be ongoing for each site before the start of school. And as we start school, our routine maintenance such as filter service and inspections at each site and be ongoing throughout the school year. Throughout the year, we'll make sure to keep our indoor air supply fans running before the start of school each day and keep them running throughout the day. As well as working to increase outside air ventilation whenever possible for classrooms and office spaces. So in keeping with this kind of maintenance and schedule, we're staying in line with the CDC's COVID-19 guidelines for reopening buildings. And during our, doing our best to ensure the adequate fresh air circulation for district staff as well as students. Also visitors in the classroom, we touched on, will be continuing to follow the county public health director's guidance, which allows you to return to fully open business, will allow visitors in the classroom. A social distancing space allows. Visitors will need to be asked about symptoms and temperature checks done prior to entering the classroom. Example, that might be in the office. Regarding health checks, it's a big one. We continue to follow the guidelines of the public health department, which are currently the ask employees about symptoms and temperature checks. We do that now currently with active employees on site. Ideally, parents need to ask their child about the symptoms and temperature before coming to school. There's apps available and could be used for a cost. If that's not done by parents, teachers would need to ask the student about symptoms and temperature before entering classroom. Potentially using wristbands for confirmation, a different color each day. We're exploring different types of group thermometers, although there's downsides to that. They take time. In a, in a in a certain amount of students times X amount of seconds per students, we were factoring almost 50 to 60 minutes to have students go through that process with an automated system. The other piece to that is it needs to be done inside. They don't do well in outside temperatures. We also need to remember that it's important for all staff that should be able to, and available to form temperature checks for students before entering the classroom. Does it mean hiring extra help? Maybe. We don't know. We're also talking about temperature checks for students on the bus. Or they get checked at school. It will extremely delay the bus in that sense. So we continue to work on those items. And we'll continue to meet with the subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, Abner and Edgar for leading the systems and safety. And there are five other subcommittees that we won't hear from today. I can tell you that the special education subcommittee has 38 members, parents, students and team members. And that subcommittee has split itself into five smaller work groups around elementary, middle or high school and special specialists like occupational therapy and speech and language pathology. And we will hear from all subcommittees their final details on a special board meeting on August 3rd. And in between time, we will have multiple points of communication with the board. Before I go on, I would like to pause and see if the board members have any questions for any of our subcommittee members that you heard from tonight.
If, if we don't have comments.
We have, there's one comment. It is from Robert Jung of Park Victoria Drive. And he comments, what is the plan if an infection is found? Assuming there is isolation, what is the plan for contact tracing and other measures?
Thank you for the question. Robert, Michael?
Well, I, first off, I think that is a great question. We've seen that in some other countries where they did kind of try to reopen schools a little bit. They had to close them back down because they saw localized infections spark up again. So I think it would be very wise to put some sort of contingency in plan in place so that it's thought out ahead of time that if we are seeing, you know, some cases start happening around the schools, we can immediately isolate it, contain it. Secondly, well, at a high level, my question is about the prep time necessary to make all these preparations. I know folks are scrambling right now to do a lot of work in a short amount of time. And I just, I just wanted to ask, you know, do you need more time to make the preparations more robust?
I think I'd like to start by responding to both of those questions saying, Superintendent Jordan, make sure that we have those questions recorded. The purpose of this information being provided by the subcommittee is to give you a status of where they are. And also the comments from the public are very helpful to, so they can make sure that they have robust answers to those when those times come. I would doubt at this case, at this time, in either case, that they will be able to answer those questions comprehensively.
That, that's fine. I think these are long term questions to, to be considered.
Absolutely. So those are appreciated. And if there's any other comments from the public or questions like that, that we should consider. We do have the email address that they can reach out to as far as questions. Or if they have that opportunity to zoom in on one of the subcommittees to make sure that that conversation is heard. So Superintendent, I would ask you, share with the board the times that the subcommittees are happening. So if we want to possibly join in or zoom, or we may get some questions from constituents that we would share either in that group or we would provide that information to you.
I share, you can do both.
Okay. So there are multiple ways for those in the audience that may be thinking about this, may have a question later, but they don't know what it is right now. There are a couple of ways. One, you can reach out to the board member you're most familiar with. You also may be able to reach out to Scott, the board communication specialist. And then also there'll be details about each of the subcommittees is fluid in terms of they're setting their own dates and times of when they're meeting. But if you have a particular ask for a subcommittee, please reach out to the board communication specialist. And then he'll be able to provide that information or obtain that for you on your behalf.
Thank you, Vice President Norwood. And I would add to that as well, that for those particular questions around school closures and containment of viruses, we will need to follow the public health department's protocols on those. And as the public health department is figuring that out itself, they will let us know. Are there any other questions on the dials?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment and I really appreciate the presentation today in regards to all the subcommittees working together in figuring out the best solution for our children because, you know, we've seen the models worldwide. I've talked to a lot of friends, you know, with children over in China and Korea, you know, overseas. And what the thing that they did was hastily put our children back into school. This very thoughtful process of all the subcommittees and the parents really is a telling story of we all care. And so we will continue to work together to find the best solution possible. So thank you.
I echo those sentiments. Are there any other, any other comments from the board member? Awesome. Superintendent, you can continue.
All right. This is the timeline that I shared on June 9th. And just for historical continuity, so you see where we were on June 9th. And now for today. This is our timeline going forward. In July, our subcommittee work will continue to iron out those details and as Vice President Norwood said, if you have any questions, please do either share them with Scott Forsner or Communication Specialist. Or on our website, we have the superintendent's office. There's an email listed there. And we will provide weekly communication updates to the board via my weekly communication. And we are working on enrolling our students in 100% distance learning. Today, cabinet met earlier with our director Chen Song. And with the data collected from all of the school sites at the elementary level, we have approximately 1,413 parents who said that they would commit to 100% distance learning at least half the year, if not the full year. And while our staff was not able to connect with every parent at every school site, our tech team with the data analyst extrapolated from that that we would have approximately 2,400 elementary students. So we are working on determining the number of teachers for that who will be needed, which will be anywhere from 60 to 90. And also the registration with a target date of July 15th to launch registration. And of course, as Santa Clara County Public Health Department continues with updates, that fluid is a good description. I would say sometimes it goes one way and then suddenly takes another way. So that's why we have to be flexible and remember that it's not about building the perfect plan. It's about building the best plans from which we can build and pivot. And as we go forward in July, you heard about the parent to parent. And you also heard about our colleague to colleague professional learning that will be going on. And August 3rd will be our special board meeting where we will have from all subcommittees their highlights of their detailed plans to be launched. And I am stating for the record and with any board input that we will begin the year of 2020 on the designated school date, which is August 13th. Basing in first with everybody in distance learning. That will afford us the one month of making sure that all of our protocols are in place, all the signage is put in place, all of the sneeze guards are installed. And all of the PPE that is required has arrived. And it affords our teachers and parents the opportunity to connect either one on one or in small groups. I know that teachers are very anxious about making sure that they have time to do small group or one on one assessment with their learners. So that they have a better understanding of who they are before they launch into hybrid. So we're targeting the middle of September for the hybrid. And I have to make sure that it's clear that people understand that there are two pathways. Number one is the hybrid pathway. And when I say that everybody is starting in distance learning for the first month, it's to prepare for the hybrid pathway. And then there's the other pathway that I just mentioned, which is the 100% distance learning for at least half of the year. And that group will start a week later, August 20th. Because we want to make sure that all of those teachers who are involved in the 100% online learning have the opportunity to collaborate and fully complete their lesson designing and scoping for what the learning to be done.
Thank you. Scott, do you have any additional questions on this particular topic?
We have no more public comments at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I really so so inspired by the number of people who want to have a part in how we do this for 2021. And for the time that a large number of people are committing to working in subcommittees to figuring out the answers to the questions. And for those who are providing resources and who are researching the best available for us and especially for all of our community for having the mindset that we are in times that are unprecedented, that are probably, I can say from the pandemic of 2003, four, were not comprehensible at that time. And here we are making it work because of the technology that we have at hand and because of the foresight. I'm going to say his name again, of Director Chen Song. It how he and his team and all that we work with are always looking ahead. Because when we look ahead, that allows us to be prepared for the present. So thank you to all involved and especially to our team members. And I'm very proud of our culture of we.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. And that concludes our reports for the evening. We are now at 17 action items. And that concludes our reports for the evening. We are now at 17 action items. Action item A, number 17A, Adopt Resolution 2020.43, encouraging the celebration of the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month, Superintendent's Office.
All right, I'll take it from there. So yeah, this is a new resolution that we're bringing to the board today. Once again, we got some students involved in this, which always makes it much more meaningful and it gives us some insight from a student's perspective. So this resolution was developed by MHS students Jasmine, and forgive me if I mispronounce names, Jasmine Finouliar, Edward John EJ Lauria, Jackie Thai, Brandon Pico, Ethan Toh, and Sky Johnson. And that was with guidance from MHS True Colors Club Advisors, Brett Weber and Lisa Sammy. And as always, they have created a video reading of the resolution for everybody. Here we go.
Whereas Mopetis Unified School District supports the rights, freedoms, and equality of those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer, better known as the LGBTQ community. Whereas those who took a stand for human rights and dignity at the Stonewall Inn in New York City on June 28th, 1969, were pioneers of the LGBTQ movement, including two transgender women of color, Sylvia Rivera and Marsha P. Johnson, who were brave, visible leaders in the uprising at Stonewall Inn. Whereas in December of 1973, the Board of the American Psychiatric Association voted to remove homosexuality from its list of mental illnesses.
Whereas in 1975, the Civil Service Commission eliminated the ban on the employment of homosexuals in most federal jobs. Whereas on January 8th, 1978, Harvey Milk made national news when he was sworn in as an openly gay member of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors.
Whereas the LGBTQ community has many historical figures that climbed to the top of their respective fields, such as WNBA stars Cheryl Swoops and Sue Bird, Olympic figure skaters Brian Boitano and Johnny Weir, tennis stars Billie Jean King and Martina Novratilova, Olympic gold medalist diver Greg Louganis, U.S. Women's Soccer star Megan Rapinoe, actors Ellen DeGeneres, Jodie Foster, and Neil Patrick Harris, and musicians Elton John, Ricky Martin, Freddie Mercury, and Sam Smith.
Whereas in October of 1979, 75,000 people participated in the National March on Washington for Lesbian and Gay Rights to Demand Equal Civil Rights.
Whereas on August 5th, 2004, the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals determined in Smith v. Sidya Salam that transgender employees are protected from workplace discrimination under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Whereas on October 28th, 2009, the Matthew Shepard and James Byrd Jr. Hate Crimes Prevention Act was passed by Congress and signed into law by President Obama. And the bill expanded existing federal hate crimes law to include crimes motivated by victims' actual or perceived gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, or disability.
Whereas on June 26th, 2013, the Supreme Court of the United States ruled in United States v. Windsor that Section 3 of the Defense of Marriage Act, DOMA, was unconstitutional and that the federal government cannot discriminate against married lesbian and gay couples for the purposes of determining federal rights, benefits, and obligations. Whereas on June 26th, 2015, the Supreme Court of the United States in Obergefell v. Hodges decided by vote of 425 that the Fourteenth Amendment required all states to license marriages between same-sex couples and recognize all marriages that were lawfully performed out of state. Whereas on May 13th, 2016, the Department of Justice and Education released joint guidances to provide educators the information they needed to ensure that transgender students attend school in an environment free from discrimination based on sex.
Encouraging the celebration of the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month. And whereas in June 2020, the Supreme Court of the United States decided by a vote to 6 to 3 that one cannot be fired simply for their sexual orientation or gender identity under the Civil Rights Law of 1964.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mopetis Unified School District Board of Education, one, recognizes that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ rights are human rights and are protected by the Constitution. Two, recognizes that all Americans should be treated fairly and equally regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. Three, acknowledges the struggle of protesters and countless other LGBTQ people for equality. Four, encourages the celebration of LGBTQ Pride Month to provide a continuing opportunity for all people in the United States to learn about the discrimination and inequality that has faced and continues to face the LGBTQ community. And five, agrees that the United States must continue to strive to ensure that the promise of equality is realized for all Americans.
Passed and adopted by the Mopetis Unified School District Board of Education at the meeting held on June 2020 by the following vote.
Is there a motion?
I motion approve the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Seventeen B, Adopt Resolution 2020.44, ordering a November 3rd, 2020 election, setting specifications of the election order, and requesting that the county registrar voters canvass the returns of the election, Superintendent's Office.
Scott, would you like to take this one, please?
Okay. Yeah, we have an upcoming election in November, and we have two seats that will be expiring then. And as part of that, we must put this resolution before the court. And I can get it up on the screen. And let's see here. I was just going to share it. There we go. And just some things with it, the nomination period will open July 13th. The first day candidates are able to pick up the nomination documents either at the district office or at the registrar of voters, which is located at 1555 Burger Drive. These packets contain forms and information required for filing, including estimated costs of candidate statements. The candidate filing period is July 13th through August 7th.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Item C, Adopt the District's 2020, 2020, 2021 Proposed Budget Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Okay. Yeah, tonight we're asking the board to officially adopt our 2020 and 2021 proposed budget. On June 9th, staff did a budget study with the board and after the study, there were no changes to our proposed budget. In our agenda, we have a four attachment here. The first one is the current year 1920 estimated income statement of all funds. And then we also have the 2021 projected year income statement of all programs. Along with our multi-year projection worksheet. And let me share my screen, see if I was able. Yes, that is now multi-year projection of the three-year scenario number two projection. Okay, can everyone see the screen? Okay, good. This is the scenario two that we shared during our budget study session on June 9th. And this, we will have a balanced budget for the coming year, 2021. And we will be okay for the year 21, 22, and but will be short of 14 million based on the current governor's made revision proposal for the third year. And as you know, recently, the state legislator and the government news some reached agreement on state budget. So there will be changes once the state adopt the education budget. So tonight we're asking the board to adopt this version of projection. And then once we hear more detail after the state budget adopted, and then we'll revise our budget accordingly.
Thank you, Wendy. Are there any questions? And with the understanding that although the governor adopted a budget, again, we know that there are revisions coming. This is, we're not new to this process. And then this is a three-year budget, not a one-year budget.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
With that understanding, is there a motion?
I motion to adopt the budget.
We have a motion to adopt the budget. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item, item D, Conduct a Public Hearing on the District's General Funds Excess Reserve, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Well, this is also part of our budget adoption process. Each year, we needed to disclose the excess reserve in our general fund for the adoption year. For this, that's based on the Senate Bill 858, requires the school district, beginning with the 1516 adopted budget, we will need to disclose this. And for this coming year, we do not have excess reserve in our general fund. And in our strategic reserve fund 170, we'll have a balance of 2.7 million. And we plan to use this reserve fund to cover our district operation for the following year. So we would like the board to conduct a public hearing on the district's general fund excess reserve first.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open up the public hearing.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Public hearing is now open. For the record, I want to make sure it's clear, even though I see Scott's head shaking. Scott, are there any comments from the public?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, so that was since we just opened the motion for the public hearing, and it might take someone from the public a little while to type. We will give them another, let's say, two minutes. Set timer for two minutes, and once, at that time, we will close the public hearing. If we do have people in the audience that are considering, thank you, Siri, if there's anyone who's considering another item on the agenda, please look down. Scott, is it possible, while we're waiting on the two minutes, if you can put the agenda on the screen?
Sure thing.
So that folks can scroll down a little bit so they can see what's coming. Thank you. So while we are waiting for Scott to bring that up, we do have, on the next items on the agenda, is that we have to adopt a resolution to approve the 2021 Education Protection Accounting Spending Plan. We also
Yes.
We also have the approved the COVID-19 Operations Written Report. We have to conduct a public hearing and first reading for the adoption of the board policy 0470 Philosophy Goals and Objectives and Comprehensive Plans, COVID-19 Mitigation Plan. We also have conduct another public hearing and the first, the first reading for the adoption of the board policy 6157 Distance Learning. We have item I, Conduct a Public Hearing, the first reading and adoption of revisions to the board policy 3311, Business and Non-Instructional Operations. We have item J, Approve the iReady License Contract. We have item K, Adopt Resolutions 2020.40, Approving the Child Development Contract, CSPP-0571. We have item L, Resolution 2020.45, Authorizing the Issuance of Mopetis Unified School District 2020 General Obligation Refunding Bonds.
The two answers up.
Scott, are there any additional comments from the public?
We have no additional comments at this time.
Okay. With that said, there are no additional comments from the public. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. I would like to make a request to modify, to move an item on the I'd like to make an item to move item J before item E. Item J is the Approve the iReady License Contract. Is there a motion?
I motion to move item J above E.
There's a motion to move item J above item E. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item, item J is now only, is now up before item E. Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Development.
Thank you, Vice President Norwood. We are, the Learning and Development Team is pleased to have this opportunity to bring this item to, to the board. We do have the two directors, Director Kazunoki and also Director Barnes, who are going to be presenting for the board some data that the board requested. And at this point, I like to invite them to
Do we have anyone else from the math department?
We do not have anyone from the math department.
We have Liz Petz, who's also joining.
So we have a teacher from Weller, I believe, who is going to be sharing her experience with the use of iReady.
So I recall from the last meeting that we had, when it came to the discussion around iReady, we were interested in data, but we were also interested in a broader conversation around the technology, one, because of the cost, and two, the understanding of the usage. So is, so before we even get started, is the data that they're going to share relative to the number of teachers that are using it?
There is. That's correct.
Okay. We'll let them go, and then we'll figure it out afterwards.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks again for the opportunity to present the iReady assessment this evening. I wanted to start by asking Scott, if you have the presentation up and ready, if you could share that, or would you need me to do that for you?
It's always easier if, if the presenter presents, but I can do it if you're not capable at the moment.
Now, let me just see. Yeah, it'd be great if you could do it. I don't seem to have the presentation.
Okay.
Great, thanks. So we wanted to start with an idea of how iReady is used. And for the benefit of the board, I wanted to start with what the year view of iReady looks like. So our first slide is, is coming up into focus here is the number of diagnostics that we give in any current year. The year is divided up into four separate diagnostics. The first three are required for school sites to administer. The fourth diagnostic, officially known as D4, is a alternative optional diagnostic. Just to draw your attention into the first upper left-hand screen, Diagnostic One, the completion percentage, both for the district and ELA and the completion percentage, both for the district in ELA and math is represented there for you. So just to read for you, district ELA 88% proficiency, I'm sorry, completion rates, excuse me, and then math 87% completion rates. And then what you also have just to the right of that is the MS or middle school participation completion percentage at 96.5 and again at 96.5 respectively for ELA and math. So underneath that top line, if you look at the overall student performance, what we want to see is the highest number of percentages in tier one. That's where students are operating at grade level. That's good. Tier two gives students, teachers rather, an opportunity to look at skill sets that students might need to improve on. It allows them to do some specific groupings based on the results with which Elizabeth Pitts is going to specify for us this evening in great detail. And then anything that's in tier three obviously allows teachers the opportunity to work one-on-one with students, to put them in smaller groups and to do some more formative assessments throughout the year to make sure that they're building their skills. So with that is D1, obviously, you can extrapolate that same information through D2, D3, and D4. I will draw your attention to D3 specifically with the completion percentages. That is the diagnostic where all students that are currently registered as users are actively participating in that third diagnostic. The difference being with D1, our kindergarten students need a little bit more time to get acclimated to the testing environment. They are not required to participate in D1. And in D2, our middle schools take a break from the three diagnostics as they are only required to do D1 and D3. And that would be the story behind some of the difference in completion percentages that you might see. With that, I wanted to get into how the instruction is utilized. So beyond the diagnostics, Scott, if you could go ahead and slide up to slide two. Thank you, sir. We wanted to give you a sense for the usage percentages. So we have two different distinct tests that we give students the option to participate lessons in, that's reading and math. So just looking at the top yellow section, online instruction is divided up into two separate entities. One is the actual instruction or the directions that the students would utilize within iReady. And then the second component would be the actual lesson that they take. So we have roughly 7,000 or 6,934 registered iReady users for reading. And of those, we had 5,511 or 79% of them actively engage in online instruction. And 5,200 roughly engage in online lessons for reading. So you can see the respective percentages in the last column there with respect to reading. Then again, extrapolating that same approach down to math, you can see that we're at 90% student usage and 85% respectively. We are working with iReady. I know the question came up with how many teachers are utilizing this? We could easily, oh, I should point out that all of these, the column, the middle column there that reads number of students using online instruction, that is separate individuals taking at least one online instruction or a lesson year to date. So that is not five students taking 100 lessons. Each one of those is a unique individual utilizing iReady. If we could go to the next slide, please, Scott. As he's transitioning, we'll get to the reliability here in just a moment. We, the the number of teachers utilizing iReady is not easily accessible within the iReady platform. We are working with iReady currently to get a sense of how many teachers are utilizing online instruction and lessons. We could take a look at the numbers of students who are actually actively engaged in instruction and lessons. We could look at the class size ratio and and guesstimate for you, but that's not something we want to do for you. We want to make sure we get you accurate numbers. So
Let me just understand that. We've been using iReady for how long?
I believe this is the fifth year.
And we and we can, it's not inherent into the application for us to understand how many teachers are actually using it.
Yeah, built into the system, what we're able to do is look at easily the number of students, the number of lessons, the number of instructional directions that they're in, but the actual number of teachers assigning these lessons to the students is not as easily accessible. So we've been in contact with iReady over the last 10 days to pull that information to have it be more readily accessible to us.
Hold on one second. Chen, we need iReady to tell us that? You would? Or iReady would?
We have to pull that. We basically have to pull that number, either extrapolated from the system or iReady can give that to us.
That question has never been asked in seven years? How long we had iReady?
May I? It, the question has never been risen because the platform, when the students take the diagnostic test, the teachers, we have a window to give the diagnostic, the students take the diagnostic test. And that diagnostic creates, based on this is adaptive and based on the students' answers, the platform creates a learning path for the students and the lessons are assigned for the students based on where they're at. The teachers are to monitor lesson completion because the students are assigned a time to do the lessons, complete the lessons. When the students go and and take the lessons, whether it is, it's recommended 45 minutes a day. The teachers can run reports, individual reports to monitor lesson completion. When the students take the lessons and when the students score on that lesson, it has a pre-assessment of the lesson, the lesson, and then a post-assessment. If the student scores on that post-assessment 75% or more, then the student is moving towards mastery of of the of of that skill. When the teachers do run a report to see if the students had a are are failing a lesson, the students after three attempts of taking a lesson on that skill and the students has failed, the domain shuts down, meaning that now you have a red flag for the teachers to run, and that means that the student is not being successful. And so that's when the teacher intervenes.
So that
Please do.
That means each teacher has an account, correct?
Each teacher has an account, correct?
So the the rest, I understand. Each teacher has an account, a different account than a student.
Correct.
The teacher's account has the ability to do things that the student account can't, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So what I'm, what I'm gathering is that we want to know how often the teacher will go and use and the that account to run reports to monitor the student's progress. And and that we we don't, we have not been doing that.
So the last board meeting, I recall we had teachers talk about the platform.
Yes.
And the manner upon which they talked about the platform at the board meeting and outside the board meeting created a delay in our approval
Correct.
of the So one of the questions was, well, if this is the consensus of the majority of the teachers, because one of the asks has been whether or not we should continue being funding. So without an understanding of how many teachers are using it or how using it, because I believe we had a similar issue. Was it with illuminate?
Correct.
Right? And we we determined that the actual number of teachers that were using it in comparison to what we were paying was significantly different. And so what I'm, what I'm hearing here is I'm seeing that there's a large number of individualized students that are using it. But we don't have the correlating number of teachers.
Is the number of, what is in the principal's report? That Greg and Raquel, what is in the principal's report that you have on the bottom of the resources?
The principals are reporting that there has been an increased usage of the lessons since shelter in place. So they are getting utilized even more now with shelter in place and getting even more familiar with how to navigate the lessons for the for the students and how to administer or assign those lessons. Teachers are getting more familiar, which is why you see the increase now with the teacher usage.
Thank you for sharing the fact that we, thank you for telling me that the data that we're looking at is current data post after COVID-19 versus pre. Because obviously, one of the things that is definitely going to happen, because we went to distance learning, iReady was one of the readily available platforms that we had for teachers to be able to use during COVID-19. Is that accurate?
Absolutely. And we're still using it. It's available for families until the end of the month.
Go ahead.
So we're able to pull quick numbers right now without getting into all the usage data per the user, but right now we have 269 active users in the system that has used the product. But to the degree of how many it says it's off. That is year to date, correct?
Thank you.
269.
Jonathan, how many elementary teachers do we have?
Jonathan.
But that's total, though. Yeah.
Well, how about the computer, right? Because your HR, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'd like to know if you'd like me to continue going, please.
Can we wait a, wait a moment?
Sure.
Could I ask a question, Dr. Barnes? So if we did not have iReady during the shelter in place, what other platforms or tools would the teachers be using to help them with the the teaching?
So we have a couple of different curriculums that we've adopted for math. We also have a benchmark advanced, which is our English Language Arts curriculum, respectively at the elementary schools and our math program. Also at the the middle schools, they have various online resources portals where teachers are able to utilize some resources there for for students.
Are these like regular tools that the students go on and?
Yeah, it could be supplemental materials. It could be, you know, opportunities for students to take concepts further. It's it's meant to be an complement to the traditional textbooks that our students have.
But is iReady like the main platform that's being used?
No, I wouldn't say it's it's the the main. I I know that teachers are utilizing it to, again, help supplement their instruction and 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 as Liz will show in in a moment, really form groups that can help teachers target their instruction for students who are at various levels within the classroom.
What was your question, Kelly?
Was iReady like the main tool or platform that the teachers are using now during the distance learning, I think? And then what other tools are being used besides iReady?
So
Because now we're shelter in place.
Right. So Superintendent Jordan referenced the question to elementary school students.
Right. What's the number of elementary teachers that we have?
320 right now.
So I imagine that the majority of the 269 teachers are elementary.
But then Greg just referenced that no, and Greg is the secondary. Right? So Greg spoke on behalf of the elementary school teachers that they're not, they're not using as the primary tool.
No, I I wasn't suggesting that it's, I think the the question was during shelter in place, was that the primary tool? Kelly, I I would appreciate
Yeah, that was, was that the primary tool that's being used?
During shelter in place.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was primary. We certainly saw a huge increase in usage. But we also have our Benchmark Advanced online portal and curriculum supplemental materials, as well as our Go Math, our Math in Focus materials at the elementary and middle school respectively.
And the reason why I was asking that was because we're going to continue the shelter in place, and I'm just trying to figure out what other platforms will be used for the distance learning.
When it comes to, my understanding is when it comes to the math, there's a couple of pieces that, or whatever the subject is, there's a couple of pieces that we need. There needs to be that was referenced, an assessment. And then from the assessment, teachers, it'll it provides the teachers the framework in terms of how to guide their instruction. And then they use a myriad or number of tools, depending on the student, where they are, in determining how to guide their instruction. So you, that's a great question in terms of what are the toolsets that we're using. But the reason why we had the discussion last week with iReady was because we were talking about it from the perspective of what the district was going to invest, and that was on paying for the assessment component of it. Is that accurate?
Yes, the it pays for the assessment as well as the lessons.
The district does?
Yes, and the majority of the teachers we heard from last time were middle school teachers. And Rancho only uses iReady for the benchmark requirement. Teachers at Russell, some of them also use the lessons within iReady besides the benchmark. And then at the elementary level, they all use it for the benchmark. There's three benchmark reporting periods.
So I'm sorry, follow it there. All elementary schools use the benchmark?
Yes. Correct.
All, all elementary teachers and middle school teachers use the benchmark. We use the benchmark to report as a monitoring for the LCAP. Our, also, our principals use that tool to report and monitor progress in their SIPSS. Because we only have state data from third grade and up in terms of the Sback. So we do use it knows, also known as as a CAS. So we, so it is, we need, what we need is to have a district-wide aligned assessment system to monitor the progress of our students.
If I can, I know that the next slide is going to talk more about how it's being utilized by different stakeholders within the educational, our own district. So when we get to that slide, I'd like to talk more about that.
So just just by, just by quick ask, were either you here last, the last board meeting, when this item was pulled from the consent items?
I was not.
Raquel?
Was not.
Okay, so the context of part of this discussion, I guess that came from Norma? Of why we asked for this to be brought back?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
So because neither one of you were at the last board meeting, and we had an ask of this to be brought back because we didn't approve it on a consent item, which can anybody, does anybody remember how many items from consent that we pulled to have bring back in the history since we've been on the board? Have we ever done that before?
In my short time, no.
Maybe a handful of times.
Right. So we, so we pulled this off the item, the consent items to be brought back to learn more about iReady, because what we were hearing from the few people that were participating was that we should seriously consider the future of iReady as a district tool. With an understanding that we heard from the teachers that are supposed to be implementing it, the fact that one teacher even said that sometimes iReady is used as a punishment for students. So you can imagine board member being asked to approve an item to be paid for when a teacher says that sometimes they see the tool being used as a punishment to figure out what's what's going on. And then some teachers to say that I haven't been trained on it. And then for leadership to say, well, there's training opportunities, you just haven't taken advantage of them. So we're trying to sort out quite a few pieces of information here. And what I'm and what I'm getting um is an understanding of the tool now in its current state. Post COVID nineteen with an understanding that there's been a significant upsurge because of COVID nineteen. Not to say that because we're in COVID nineteen, that it doesn't have a greater value than it had prior to COVID nineteen. So um. It it's always, these are always helpful for me, and I hope they're helpful for other board members as well. I want to honor what Raquel was talking about in terms of moving forward with the presentation.
Sure, so before we get to Raquel's slide, the last side I had for us this evening was trying to answer the question of reliability between I ready. And CAS, otherwise known as predictability. So what you have at the top of the slide are the top two categories, and that's reflected in I ready. As the percent of students who are scoring at or above grade level. And the top two categories as represented in CAS is met or exceeded standard. So what you see in the two charts below ELA and math respectively. Are three years worth of comparison of the top two categories in the yellow column, which is I ready versus the CAS. Which is your light blue column. So what we want to see are numbers that are very close together, specifically as I ready over the years has. Worked to ensure greater reliability within their assessments. As it aligns to CAS and what you see both in ELA and math over the years is a higher degree. Uh, of predictability or reliability between I ready and CAS. Why is this important? Because as Norma very eloquently put, as a district, we want to try to strike a balance between district wide calibration. Making sure that there are equitable opportunities educationally for all of our students at all of our schools. And we need that measure to be somewhat reliable and predictable to the end of the year summative assessment. So this is an important chart, and I just wanted to give you extra context as you read it. Raquel.
So if I can repeat what you said back, if you don't mind.
Wait a moment, Raquel.
If I can repeat back what you said, you said that I ready is um our district calibration assessment tool. Is that is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's one of the ways that we try to ensure equitable experiences in ELA and math across the district, yes.
So is that yes or?
Yes.
Kind of is.
This is the metric that we use to have a calibrated assessment in ELA and math across the district, yes.
Okay, I'll 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 hold my questions remainder till the end. Thank you.
Scott, if you can move to the next slide, please. What I want to talk about and emphasize tonight about I ready or any. Common assessment that we use in our district is the importance of the data that's readily available to our teachers. Because the goal is to make sure that the teachers have access to information, student information, especially. With the virtual or a shelter in place, student information so that we can ensure that students continue to learn regardless of. Whether we're in class or um learning is happening virtually, and that's what I already does for us. Now, pre and post COVID, teachers were you are using or use the um the initial. A diagnostic assessment to set goals with students. So students are able to see how they're um how they are performing. In relation to what they need to know and be able to do by the end of the year. So setting goals for uh with the student are are teaching students to be aware of their own learning and take ownership. Teachers are also using the very information from I ready to create targeted interventions. Whether they do this through small groups um during class or after school. Those data points are essential for us to be able to support and meet the students where they are in their learning. In addition to the classroom environment and how um learning is designed. Teachers also use that data to meet with their their colleagues during PLC time. To either set goals at the grade level team or to share best practices. And share their challenges, what's working, what's not working. So these are all important tools for teachers. To support. The most important thing is our children. So in addition to the teachers utilizing data, site administrators use data, not just as a form of metric to determine how they're going to spend their money on Sepsa. But they use it to support what kind who which teachers may possibly need what professional development in what area. And which students may possibly need thirty minutes of uh reading intervention during school. Or which student may need after school intervention. The the data is ongoing, cycles of inquiry continues to go from the very beginning in August to to May, June. So that we can continue to monitor student learning, to monitor the professional growth um model that we want to provide our provide our teachers with. And at the district level, we use this data. So that we can support the site, support the administrators, support the teachers. By providing the professional development that they need so they can be successful in supporting their students. We've used the same data to create those groups of students in our summer school right now for. For the math groups at the elementary, at the middle school, for our reading groups, for the primary students, kinder first, second, third. We also use the same data to help our English learners be placed in the just right level class they need. So that they can achieve and and be successful and are ready for the next grade level. So the most important piece, whether we use I ready or not, is to not lose focus of. Data.
So let me back what you said, you're you're. Are you? Are you referring to the you just referring in general? Are you speaking to the board by saying the most important piece not to lose track of is data? I just want to make sure who who that was directed towards.
In general, all of us.
Okay, um, thank you for that. With that, how much more is there to present?
That's it, um.
Thank you. Norm, could you do me a favor? First, let me do this. Um, is there a motion? Are there any other questions on this particular topic?
No, I just wanted again, stay for the record. I I generally agree with Chris's questioning. Thank you for raising the issues, Chris, and keeping at it.
Are there any other comments?
Well, I think about I ready here and the presentation here, right? I didn't hear anyone mention as far as this is something that we had in place before shelter in place and distance learning. As we continue our distant learning process. We need a formative assessment to figure out how our children are doing in this distant learning. And the common denominator right now that I see is this I ready platform with their assessments. And so the based on the presentation at the last board meeting and some of the comments made. What it sounded to me is that we need a plan for better adoption or better professional development with. The teachers who aren't fully utilizing. The the tool because with the uptake of usage. Again, the data shows we haven't lost anything year to date with our students' learning. So I think as we think about this and and consider renewing the contract for this coming school year. I do not want to disrupt what we're trying to do for our children and continuing their education. And this tool will at least allow us to continue to assess that progress as we continue with distance learning.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am actually agree with trustee now here. Unless we have something else that's going to take place of. I ready, I mean, it is. Being used right now for the benchmark and there is a increase of usage. I mean, I I don't. Believe that we should. I guess disrupt the the process.
Agree, okay. With that, we we do have comments from the board. I will I will reserve my comments till after we vote.
I would also like to point out on the. Like to point out on the last slide where there's already informational resources. That at another time on your own, you might take a look at what principals reported. From the elementary sites about specifically how they use the I ready at their site. And that'll give you some feedback school by school.
Yes, I apologize for interrupting. I um I said I was done, and I do have a teacher with me who'd like to share her experience. Her name is Liz Pitts. She's a third grade teacher at Weller. She just wants to share her I ready sprint with you briefly.
If you could bring up the. The slide, it'll show the data I'm talking about. The slide after. So. Hello, um, I'm a I'm a third grade teacher at Weller. I'm also teaching summer school for Rose and Weller, trying out two different programs. Here are examples of I ready data I use to guide my teaching and help my students grow, and these are all third grade students. An example, A, this student was at over one hundred percent of their stretch growth after diagnostic reassessment. This is a report that my students keep in their leadership notebook after we conference about it and set goals. Also, I share this specific report with parents at conferences. I explain that reaching their stretch growth goal is growing one and a half years growth, which is necessary to close the gap. This student discovered that he could do math and grow with hard work. He didn't believe he could. He was so excited in class after the diagnostic three test, and you can see why. Then everything changed when we went to online learning. I needed to know more. Example B, this same student was growing. You can see the progress this student was making in math. This visual of the student's growth and potential is motivating to the student and parent. After he took the diagnostic four test, which was monitored by me, he asked to retake the test because he went down and didn't grow. He was used to growing. I conferenced with dad and the student and explained that he had stopped working on his I ready math during the online learning part of the year. Dad's look at his son confirmed he did not know that was happening. An example C, this student reached one hundred and twenty-one percent of their stretch growth at the diagnostic four. This student was growing during the year and continued to grow in reading when at home. This student's test was monitored at all times by me, just like all my students. I discovered from conferencing with this student and their parents that this. Their child really thrived with the new online learning that we were giving him. And it turned out that my student was avoiding the I ready math lessons. His parents saw him doing I ready, but it turned out to be mostly reading. I ready plays, and this is this is how it helps me. I ready plays an important role in my classroom by helping my students grow and guiding my teaching. Whether in person or online, I utilize I ready data to create flexible student groups for guided reading and math. This is ideal because a lesson path created by ready is at the student's readiness level. I use the I ready instructional grouping reports, which many teachers may not know about, I don't know, to set up. Initial rotations in class with more of a customized technology plan for each student based on their individual needs. It is the fastest way I've ever been able to set up rotations. Because for reading, I need to DRA test my kids, and for math, I need to do skill tests. So this gets them in rotation so that I'm in small group up and running very quickly. Lastly, the I ready lessons help me. By teaching the students standards and foundational skills in grades below, especially if they're two grades below. That they may still struggle with. I have no problem differentiating my lessons to lower grade levels to help them understand. But it is my responsibility to teach them the grade level standards they're at, but also my responsibility to help close that gap for them. So yes, it's not easy for the student at home. They may complain. They may complain in class, but it is possible when they don't give up. It's not easy because it's at their readiness level. I ready is one of my technology partners because of the readiness learning path it creates for my students. I really hope we keep it. That was all I had. I will add that for summer school. If I didn't have the I ready tools, uh, the I ready scores, my grouping wouldn't have been able to start the second day. So small groups um are are key to. Growing your students, but you have to get them in groups that are more similar and tighter in what they need to get that growth. More happen to make that growth happen more quickly. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll let you see the C instructor.
That's exactly what it sounds like. Thank you so much, um, Director Kusunoki, Ms. Pitts and Director Barnes for sharing your information tonight. I like the board to ask the board to make a recommendation. I'm making a recommendation for the board to please adopt the online system. This is a. A tool that will be provide consistency to our students. It will provide especially since we did not. Administer an S back scores. This will be crucial for us as to we informed. The um measure the 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 if there was a loss of um instruction and that we need to accelerate that learning for our students.
I would like to share just a personal experience with the board and executive cabinet. You know, obviously, I have young children utilizing I ready right now. And as a parent, it it's very difficult with the manual packets to spend the time to. Assess, you know, as a parent and and correct or grade that paperwork immediately with the I ready lessons. They provide immediate feedback to the student and to the parent, and so that now from a distant learning perspective. It's a time saver for the parent and student. It may be challenging to. Get up to speed to how to utilize and navigate, but once you do. It becomes a powerful learning tool for students in the shelter in place atmosphere. So thank you for letting me share that personal story.
And Norma, thank you so much for reminding us that we didn't have the S back test this year, so we we do need this. For our backup. So I'm I'm ready to make the motion to approve the I ready license contract.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
I'll come in.
Yes, I have a little comment on this topic. It's again from Robert Jung of Park Victoria. And he asks, is there a way to collect data on how students are learning the concepts? I is is it through I ready lessons or through some other mechanisms? Is there a possibility to collaborate with I ready to improve the lessons and perhaps we can get a partner discount?
I will say the short answer to all of that is yes. I ready is a part of uh the students' learning and instruction, as you heard from Ms. Pitts. Yes, we have been a partner with I ready from the beginning of our adoption of it. And yes, we have been instrumental in guiding some of the changes that we need. Granted, they aren't. Everything that we need, but we are at the table with the developers.
Thank you. So we have a so men made a motion. Is there a second?
Yip Sean made the motion.
My apologies. Kelly made the motion. Um, is there a second? I heard harm in the second. We have a motion in the second. All of them favor. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
There's an abstain. Okay, so we have um four eyes and an abstain. Okay, so it has been adopted. So um, there was a slide, so I'll I'll just say it this way. Allow your directors to see the section of the video that was recorded with the with the teachers. Because because it is either we had a group of teachers that didn't feel very well that night. Or there's an number of other teachers that feel the same way about the platform. That's one thing. The other thing is is that when they showed the data in terms of how the students are performing. So here's how I'm going to extrapolate that. So here's how I'm going to extrapolate that. The amount of effort that a teacher has the ability to put in around a platform based on their ability to teach it. You talk about those students that are in the gap. You talk about the students that need the extra help. From where I'm listening to data or listening to this information, the students that know how to do well, regardless of the quality of instruction, and I know all teachers put in the best possible based on their timing and all those things. But there were pieces missing. And it was evident in the way that we heard information about those students that are in the gap with the teachers that are using iReady and are they using it to the maximum of their ability. What we heard from this young lady tonight, as far as the third grade teacher, was what we should believe should be the standard. But we're not going to get that from most teachers for one reason or another, not because their heart isn't in it, but there's another reason. You would never bring someone to a presentation on the behalf of a product that's not going to sing the praises of that product. It's never going to happen. So I wanted to honor her time for being here to see what's possible and to wonder how many teachers could actually do what she did tonight with that product. Because there was a number, was it 300? For elementary teachers?
Three twenty-six.
I have, it's 203. I had to double check my math. Right, 203. And Chen, you said the number was?
Two sixty-nine.
Right. So you can imagine if we had with this level of assessment that could calibrate, that the entire education district of teachers believed in, where we would be in some areas with our ELS and with our math students.
Thank you, Vice President Norwood. And actually, when we're looking at the comparison nationally, the tool will accelerate the learning of English language learners. And when we're comparing to other school districts across the nation, our ELS are not performing as well.
Right. So it sounds like we have a tool that's capable of assisting in that development. Okay, thank you.
See to see.
And we found, and we found a C to C. I love that part. And thank you, everyone, for your patience with me. We do this work for a reason. We know that there are students out there that are going to be successful. We talked about closing the achievement gap. We talked about opportunity. We talked about having the tools for them to get there and where are the gaps? Why is it being repeated? This is one of those areas. And Min, it was interesting because you talked about how great iReady was as a parent. When you and I talked about it offline, you talked about the comments that you had heard from the public about how it wasn't being utilized and parents were frustrated. You got to share that too. Item E, Adopt Resolution 2020.42 to approve the 2021 Education Protection Account Spending Plan Assistant Superintendent Business Services.
Okay, this education protection account EPA is a part of the budget adoption process. There was an article and was signed back in 2012 to require the school district to use this EPA account only on instructional related activities. We cannot spend the EPA funds on administrator salary. And the district will need to disclose the spending plan as part of the adoption process for the coming year. And we have a two attachment here in the agenda. The first one is our EPA expenditure plan. Let me open that so I can share my screen with you so you can see. For this coming year, our estimated EPA amount is almost $2 million. And here's our spending plan for this coming year. You can see that all the expenditures will be spent on classroom teacher's salary and the benefits. So we're going to fully spend it and we're not going to spend any funds on administrative salaries. So we're asking the board to adopt this resolution as a part of our 2021 budget adoption process.
Are there any questions for Wendy? Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt the resolution to approve the EPA funds.
There's a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Approved COVID-19 Operations Written Report Assistant Superintendent Learning and Development.
Thank you for members and community. There is not an understatement to say that we are living in unprecedented times. And through this global pandemic, our business, our world was turned upside down. And that was no difference in terms of the development of the LCAP, which stands for Local Control Accountability Plan. If it had not been for the pandemic, tonight, you would be adopting or approving the LCAP for the next three years. And instead, I'm going to be asking the board to adopt the, what is called a COVID-19 Operations Written Report. And the information that I'm going to share with you tonight is not new information because we have been in this journey together. And we have been keeping not only you abreast of the development and the implementation of ensuring all of the executive orders from the governor, but ensuring that our students continue to learn. And it will be just recapping and putting it formalizing into a report. So I will share my.
So if that happens to be the case, is there a request to see the report? Or can we, did everyone have the opportunity to review the report prior to the board meeting? So we have two members. Michael, did you have the opportunity to review the report before the board meeting?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Okay, so we have five people that have the opportunity to review the report before the board meeting. Would you like to, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the COVID-19 Operations Written Report.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
On a separate note, who's responsible for professional development? I mean, how does that work? Is that HR? Is that assistant? Is that LND?
Both them together.
Okay. Thank you for that. Item G. Conduct a public, conduct a public hearing in the first reading for the adoption of Board Policy 0470 Philosophy Goals, Objectives, and Comprehensive Plans COVID-19 Mitigation Plan. The board, who owns this?
I do.
Okay.
Trying to share my screen.
I was about to say, there's nobody's name on it.
Okay, so I have three board policies that I'm bringing forward to the board that are connected to COVID-19. And this is the first one. But this one does is it it memorializes what should take place in the event of not just COVID-19, but any future pandemics. And this particular board policy pretty much summarizes what we've done this spring and what we plan to do in the fall as far as making sure that the learning environment is safe, that we've implemented everything required by the Public Health Department as well as the CDC and the state, ensuring that we have opportunities for a lot of stakeholder input, ensuring that we are looking at ways to ensure that our students who are not engaged are engaged. It just captures the COVID-19 report that we just passed. It captures the stakeholders reports that we heard on June 9th and also tonight, as well as at the special board meeting on May 19th. And so since this is a new board policy, what the board is required to do is open for the first reading. So you would open for the first reading, allow time for the public to read it. You don't have to read it out loud. You just need to allow time for the public to read it. And then you close it. And then when we come back in August, then we have the second reading and adoption.
Okay.
And also, if you have any questions or something you would like to change, you can bring it up now.
Sir, motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. The public hearing is now open. Scott, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public at this time.
Thank you. Why does it, if it's perpetual, then what, why does it reference COVID-19 versus some other term? It's supposed to be ongoing. Like, you know, because you talked about in the event of anything in the future, but this references COVID-19 specifically.
It does. And when you've heard that term past practice a million times, I'm sure in education. So if something were to happen, people in the future could go back and say, hey, what did they do when? And there it is.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I'd like to add to that. And I would hope that if we put a lot of thought into this, people in the future are going to look back and thank us. You know, this takes me back to the study I've been doing about past pandemics dating back to the Black Death. And we're able to know a lot of what we do know today about plagues and pandemics and how to protect a society from it because there were, you know, a few brave historians during the 1300s who actually thought, hey, I'm going to chronicle everything I see and my thoughts about it and some insights and try and preserve them for the future. So, you know, for future generations, when something like this happens again, they can have some lessons that they learn from us, you know. So sometimes we do talk about 22nd century education. And this thing is, I call it a century flu. This is the type of disease of a magnitude that happens about once every hundred years. So, you know, the work we do today might be laying some seeds of wisdom for someone in the 22nd century dealing with the pandemic of 2120. So yeah, just want that in the record.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public?
We have no comments from the public at this time.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Item H, Conduct a public hearing in the first reading for the adoption of the Board Policy 6157 Distance Learning, which most likely aligns with the information that the superintendent just stated. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to open the public hearing for the first reading of Board Policy 6157 Distance Learning?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Han, mention that one. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Board member, no. Second it. Motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Public hearing is now open. Set timer for two minutes.
This is, this is a new board policy on distance learning and essentially provides for the opportunity for the district to employ district learning, excuse me, distance learning in in all circumstances, not just in times like COVID-19, but also as a viable option for learning opportunities for students in the future, including credit recovery or independent study, as well as if they have their own personal health conditions that would be beneficial to have a distance learning program.
So in essence, we are expanding our educational opportunities for our students to include distance learning as an option, separate from independent study or whatever else that may be.
Right.
Awesome. Thank you. And we have a dated approval because there are over 12, approximately 12, the 1,200 students?
Fourteen, fourteen fifty-one, I think it is.
Which?
Or fourteen seventeen.
Right, which if we extrapolated out based on the number of surveys, would it be more like a quarter of the district?
Like 2,500, yep.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Chen.
And that's just elementary.
That's just elementary. Thank you, Chen Song for that support. Chen Song.
He's not going to help us anymore.
We have no public comment at this time.
That was, I didn't have to say anything. That was.
I'm getting it. I'm getting it.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
No, motion to close the public hearing. When we have a second, motions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Congratulations, MUSD. You are now in the era of online education.
Nice. The third board policy is a revision to an existing policy. This means that you will need to open for reading and public comment. And then if there's no further discussion by the board, then you can motion, a board member can motion for adoption of the revision. So there's one revision here. This is regarding bids and it is for any business and non-instructional operations that we would add in there the words, including requests for proposals from Alpitas businesses when possible. The full sentence is, in leasing or purchasing equipment, materials, supplies, or services for the district, and when contracting for public projects involving district facilities, the board shall explore lawful opportunities to obtain the greatest possible value for its expenditure of public funds, including requests for proposals from Alpitas businesses when possible.
So this, is there a question from our board members? So I appreciate this public hearing opportunity as we, as the Pus United School District is a business in the city of Milpitas. And as we see the economy finding ways to recover, the possibility of being able to support our local businesses in Milpitas wherever possible. I mean, getting that written into board policy reflects our commitment to some of the initiatives that the city of Milpitas is operating in our care and concern because some of our families do work in the city. And we do have our map for future ready learners in terms of building relationships with partnership with the school, with the city organizations wherever possible. So the opportunity, especially now, this is a very, very timely adoption of a revision. So is there a motion to conduct a public hearing?
Motion to conduct a public hearing.
We have a motion to conduct the public hearing. First reading and adoption of revisions. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now open. Set timer for two minutes. Not that long. Set timer for two minutes. Change it, thanks, Jerry. So when I make the, when I make the motion to close the public hearing, you can also close and make the motion to adopt.
Yeah, Vice President Norwood, really just, your comments are spot on because as we were just driving to this board meeting location, some of our Milpitas small businesses have been closed or, you know, because of the pandemic and this opportunity for us to partner with LPIS businesses. You're absolutely correct, it's, it's, it's time that we invest back in the community as well too.
Thank you.
I knew it was right around 200 something because our full teacher load is around 430, so you figure about half of them are high school secondary. But wanted to ask, give him an opportunity to toss.
There are no public comments at this time.
So I motion to close the public hearing and adopt the revisions to the board policy 3311.
We have a motion to close and adopt.
Second.
We have a motion to close and adopt in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Congratulations. Item K, adopt resolution 2020.40, approved child development contract. CSP dash 0573 and resolution 2020.41, approving child development contract CCTV dash 0272 with the CDE for the 2021 school year. That should have been first with all the numbers and letters and acronyms. School year Assistant Superintendent Learning and Development.
This, thank you, President, Vice President Norwood. And this is a routine item, every year we come to before the board to basically accept a resolution as we're accepting the monies from the state Department of Education to run our two CDC centers.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolutions?
Motion to adopt resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second? We have a motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, and tell Jerry, tell Dr. Lopez, thank you for his hard work and his commitment in connecting dots in new ways for our families. Hopefully the P2P will, will be able to connect with the parent services, the parent support services group that we saw through the committee selection, because there may be some synergy between the two. Awesome, thank you. Item L, resolution 2020.45, authorizing the issuance of Milpitas Unified School District 2020 General Obligation Refunding Bonds. Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Okay, if you, if you recall at the April 28th board meeting.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, a long time ago, okay, let me refresh your memory on that then. So at that board meeting, we have Blake Beam, our financial advisor from KNN, presented the potential refunding opportunities for the 2012 Measure E bond. So at the meeting, the board provided staff with direction to move forward with this process. So tonight, we're bringing this resolution here to ask the board to approve this resolution. So staff can work with the KNN to move forward in this refunding bond process. We have four documents attached in our agenda tonight. But the one we need the board to approve is the resolution. So which is this document, let me see, let me share my screen here. Okay, so this is the resolution 2020.45. We have a 25 pages long and it's prepared by our bond council, straight link company. So basically, this resolution will authorize the staff to go ahead, move the process forward. And if you have any question, I think our financial advisor Blake is here with us virtually. And he can help to answer some questions you have.
I just have a question for you. I know that the last time we had this conversation, there was a timing part of the issue and also where our rating was going to be in terms of what the possibility was, because this was an opportunity for for us to reduce the amount the taxpayers were paying, is that correct?
Yes, well, this refunding will create savings for us and the savings will go back to the community, to the taxpayers.
Right, and so we're still in position to go forward based on the shift in all of the numbers in terms of the budget deficit and those types of things?
Oh yeah, this, this refunding won't, I mean, our budget deficit probably will impact our rating a little bit. And which Cheryl and I just had a rating meeting with Moody's this past Friday. But as the representative from Moody's shared with us that overall, they understand that the education industry face the financial challenges. So we're going to, we will have our rating result back this Friday, so we'll see how it looks like. And, but overall, maybe Blake, if you're here virtually with us, maybe you can help to answer what that dramatically or will have some impact to our refunding to move forward in this process.
Yeah, hi, good evening, everybody, I am here, Wendy, and yeah, the, you know, the rating agencies, their approach with their rating methodology is not to be kind of reactionary, they have a kind of a long-term view and so part of the storyline that was shared by your administrative leadership when we spoke with Moody's last Friday was one of anticipated fiscal impacts that the district is currently dealing with. And with efforts that will be made kind of on a twofold basis, looking at opportunities to enhance revenues, looking forward and as well as opportunities to address expenditures moving forward. With the goal in mind to minimize the budget deficit that is currently being discussed and is anticipated for the upcoming fiscal year.
And I'll add to that, we talked about revenue building and give them examples such as our Milpitas Alliance partners and the different grants and donations that we've actively pursued.
Thank you.
So are there any other questions from the board?
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution 2020.45.
We have a motion to adopt 2020.45 resolution, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Item 18, consent items. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board, staff or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Are there any items to be pulled by board members?
Nothing from me.
Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve all the consent items.
Motion to approve all the consent items, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve all the consent items, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, consent items are passed, congratulations. Put your, the following dates of future board meetings, August 25th, 2020, study session, 5:00 PM closed session, 6:00 PM open session, 7:00 PM to be determined, September 8th, 2020, wait a minute, date of future board meeting, August 25th.
We actually need to put on there the special board meeting on Monday, August 3rd.
So dates of future board meetings, we have a special board meeting, August 3rd, 2020.
Yes, and it's a Monday and the reason that it's Monday is because the Tuesday is city council meeting. So I didn't want us to conflict with that.
Okay, Monday, August 3rd, 2020. August 25th, September 8th, 2020. With a study session, 5:00 PM closed session, 6:00 PM open session, 7:00 PM. Also keeping in mind that we are in unprecedented times, so there may be possibility of a special board meeting outside of that scope, because we are still in distance. There is the ability to attend the board meeting to a similar way that Michael Siel or Han Lee In is being able to do as well. So if you're going on vacation or something like that, do they have to post from the door?
No, because right now we're in COVID times and until the governor changes his executive order to go back to the full Brown Act requirements, we are able to be remote without having to post where we are.
So you can mean, so if you want to take that, that, catch the next SpaceX out of NASA to the space station and be there, you can have the board meeting from there as well. Any additional announcements or reminders? We are now in summer school. Congratulations, it is my understanding, we also have our, our special needs students that are in on campus. We are piloting some on-campus programs, congratulations, preparing for the fall. Congratulations, Ms. Brunson, in terms of the number of hires and our staff preparation for next year. And Wendy, you receiving a new business manager from someone that you've groomed and of course, Superintendent Jordan for all the, Jordan for all the effort that you've put in thus far. This is our official last board meeting of the 2021. I have to also space, say special thanks to our board for their commitment. For men, for your election appointment and being a part of this team and contributing right away. And of course, our new superstar is over there, David Flashner. Scott, Jack of all trades and the name that will not be mentioned because we still want him to work with us in the future.
Where's Chin?
I think he went home, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, and the meeting is adjourned.